If everyone could take their seats so we can get started. Welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners, 6:30 Tuesday, June 17, 2025, regular scheduled board meeting. We're going to begin our meeting with an invocation by Commissioner Michael, Pastor Michael Price, and he will also lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance if everyone would please stand.
You tonight for this opportunity that we have to assemble in the community room of our admin building as our elected officials, as well as our community and citizens come together collectively on that we may handle the business of our community. We want to thank you for safe travels and traveling grace that we made it in the midst of the weather. Again, thank you for those that have taken time out of their schedules to come and share tonight. And then we do want to thank you for those who are watching via Facebook Live and YouTube as we again are assembled to handle your business. We pray that you would lead and guide us in the way that you would have us to go and that all the things that we do would first of all be pleasing in your sight and then be for the betterment of our community. Again, we honor you and we thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So we have a few changes to the agenda. The following zoning items were advertised for June 17, 2025, BLC meeting but have been removed by the applicant. Comp A, Comp Amendment 24-02, RZ 24-07, Comp Amendment 24-06, and RZ 24-20 have all been removed at the request of the applicant, and we will hear these items at a later time. I have two items. I have a walk-on item, resolution approving an appointment to the Henry County Board of Tax Assessors. And then we have three condemnations. Where is the county manager here? We have three condemnations that have been removed from the consent agenda, and that's going to be partials 40, partial 43, and partial 45, and those will be brought back at a later time. So you don't have to read those items when you come up to do the consent agenda. So the first item on the agenda is the presentation from our Honorable Superintendent, Dr. John Pace III. If he would please come forward. He is our Superintendent of Henry County Schools, and we are so happy to have you
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, and pillars of the community. First of all, I'd just like to thank you for having me here today to share an update, and I bring greetings on behalf of Henry County Schools, and we are happy to be, I am happy to be here with you, our partners, our Henry County Government. I'd like to first begin by acknowledging our award-winning Henry County Board of Education, the 2023-24 Governance Team of the Year in the state of Georgia. I'd like to recognize our Chair, who's in the audience with us today, Ms. Sophie Pope of District 4.
Ms. Sophie, stand up.
I'd also like to recognize our Vice Chair, Mrs. Annette Edwards of District 2, Board Member Dr. Pam Nutt of District 1, Board Member Mrs. Jennifer Carter of District 3, and Board Member Mr. Mackenzie McDaniel of District 5. As we view our compass for the future, our work remains firmly grounded in our community-inspired strategic plan, built on our core beliefs, policies, strategic actions, and priority student outcomes. We aspire to achieve even greater results, bringing our vision to fruition of ensuring a high-quality, world-class education for every student. I am proud to be a part of Henry County Schools, which is the eighth-largest school district in Georgia. We have over 43,000 students with approximately 6,000 employees, making us the largest employer in Henry County. However, with the responsibility of being the largest employer, we strive to be one of the best employers, for some of the best employees, because these employees are entrusted with taking care of our most precious people, our pupils and our children. Aligning with one of our core beliefs, effective teachers, leaders, and staff produce excellent results. Speaking of excellent results, the Henry County Schools' 2024 graduation rate rose to 86.8%, outperforming the state average of about 1.4% and improving upon the Henry County Schools' average of the previous year. Now, speaking of graduation, the class of 2025 comprising of nearly 3,700 graduates recently celebrated their commencement, showcasing exceptional perseverance, brilliance, and determination. With this class of 2025, we expect the graduation rate to increase again and outperform the current graduation rate. Their success reflects not only their hard work, but the steadfast support from educators and family. Adding to their achievements, the class of 2025 secured nearly $95 million in scholarships. Let me repeat that. This class has secured $95 million in scholarships and counting, a substantial increase of approximately $31 million compared to last year. This accomplishment highlights dedication of students, educators, and family. As one of our core beliefs states, family and community involvement is critical to student success. I think that deserves a round of applause for our graduates, class of 2025. And we're not only congratulating them, we're congratulating and thanking you all, because they don't do it by themselves. It takes a community to get these type of results. As we look ahead, our preliminary, well, let me begin with this. Another one of our core beliefs is we believe that each student can learn at or above grade level and will have an equal opportunity to do so. I want to repeat that. We believe that each student can learn at or above grade level and will have the equal opportunity to do so. All students. Our preliminary Georgia milestone results are signaling growth in literacy, math, and science for the 2024-25 school year. We are projected to have some of our highest proficiency levels since 2022. While we are seeing gains, we must keep our foot on the gas to accelerate student learning and monitor our data to see how we can improve and continue to get better. On the picture presented above, you will see the Georgia Department of Education recognize a few of our schools as literacy leaders and masters of mathematics based on 2024 performance. Schools such as Ola Middle School, Stockbridge Middle School, Locust Grove Middle School, Pates Creek Elementary School, Red Oak Elementary School, Dutch Town High School, and Ola High School are a few of the ones in this picture to go along with the rest. You may be asking yourself, why do I highlight this? Well, I think it's important, while historical data is important and relevant in some factions, it's most important to look at current data and how our students are performing today. Yes, there may be lists out there that speak to historical data. However, I want to give you just a scenario. Imagine watching your favorite sports team, but looking at the data, their record from two years ago. I'm going to go out on a limb here, and don't boo me, but one of my favorite sports teams are the Miami Heat. So I was looking up their record last night from 2023, and based on that record, the Heat's playoff record was 12-6, which earned them a spot in the NBA Finals. Imagine to my surprise when I was watching the NBA Finals last night and saw the Indiana Pacers. Hurt my heart, because data said from two years ago, the Miami Heat should have been there. But that's just an example. I think if I'd have looked at the current record, I would have realized Miami Heat wouldn't have been in the Finals. The importance of looking at data. I'll move on. I don't want to get in trouble. Summer learning opportunities. To keep our foot on the accelerator of learning, Henry County Schools extends learning beyond the traditional school year with summer learning opportunities. Our early kindergarten program is helping our youngest learners build a strong foundation in early literacy, numeracy, and social skills, ensuring a smooth start to their educational journey. Additionally, Summer Bridge supports students in grades 3 through 8 with targeted instruction in essential grade-level literacy and mathematics skills, complemented by the enrichment opportunities in STEM and fine arts for a balanced and engaging experience. For our high school students, credit recovery and acceleration opportunities are available, allowing them to stay on track for graduation, strengthen academic skills, and even get ahead in coursework. These programs ensure students remain engaged, build academic strength, and are prepared for success, because bright futures begin right here in Henry County Schools. And of course, all students are encouraged to read as much as possible this summer as we prepare for a strong start for the next school year. And parents, you're not off the hook either. You have to read as well. You have to read with your children, aunties, uncles, grandma, neighbors, everybody's reading in Henry County. As we grow as a community, we are updating and expanding. You can see on this slide some expansions at our existing schools along with a new transportation facility on the west side of the county. Additions at Dutch Town Middle and Ola Middle provide additional classroom space as well as science labs. A new elementary school is also scheduled to open fall 2027 for our Locust Grove Cluster. And I want to give a special thank you to our community for your support in our last ESPLAS that helps bring projects like this to life. As a part of our community-inspired strategic plan, there's a resounding focus on STEM in all of our schools. I am happy to share that the highly anticipated Henry County Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics High School is under construction and is on track to open in the fall of 2027. That means upcoming 7th and 8th graders will be eligible to apply for the STEM High School for the start of their 9th and 10th grade year. The STEM High School is the capstone of a district-wide strategic initiative to build a seamless K-12 STEM pipeline. This school will produce the engineers of the future in fields like mechanical, electrical, environmental, and biomechanical engineering. Starting in elementary school, we have invested in robotics, coding, and engineering programs to cultivate an early passion for STEM. This long-term vision ensures that students from all corners of Henry County have the foundational skills and inspiration to thrive in the challenging and rewarding environment of the STEM High School and beyond. Now let's take a look at one critical area of improvement where we can hone in on. This area is attendance and the correlation of attendance to achievement. Since COVID, there's often been a mindset of school is optional. However, we need to rally together as a community to raise the importance of being in school. Unfortunately, the research shows that absenteeism significantly harms and impacts learning. As you look at the slide as an example, data on this slide references reading below grade level due to chronically absent students, especially in grades pre-K to second grade. Research in Georgia shows that missing more than five days of schools significantly harms learning. With improved attendance rates, students will be better, able to fully engage in learning opportunities, and achieve academic success, not just academic success, but success beyond the core for the whole child. The safety, security, and wellness of our students and staff is our greatest priority, and we have made a number of investments in campus safety, student and staff safety, and student and staff wellness. This includes a mental health and wellness facilitator at every school. Aligning with our core belief, all learning environments should be supportive, safe, and secure. We cannot overstate the importance of a collective effort from all stakeholders, students, families, staff, teachers, our Board of Education, our law enforcement partners, and the entire Henry County community to foster a supportive, safe, and secure learning environment across all schools. And I also want to thank our community for when they have a tip or know something, that they see something, they say something. It's so effective and impactful, and I just want to thank you for always being involved. Lastly, I want to extend a special thank you to our county commissioners for their partnership with our school resource officers, Board of Education, and our Henry County Police Department, which significantly contributes to the safety and security of our schools. This collaboration and partnership is invaluable to our schools and community. Thank you again for allowing me to be here tonight, and know that Henry County Schools is committed to ensuring that every student in Henry County Schools is prepared for a bright and successful future. Remember, bright futures begin in HCS. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Are there any comments or questions from our board members? Commissioner Robinson?
Well, thank you Superintendent for coming. I just want you to know that we up here definitely fight for our schools, because the partnership comes into play when people are trying to invest in Henry County. So it's very important that we all are working together and we show the new people that are trying to move to Henry County that we're stable. So we definitely appreciate you coming to provide the facts, because those are some things that we want to make sure that when people are speaking, because we do have hard-working educators that are there trying to educate, and not just educators, the students who are there to get that higher education here in Henry County. So just wanted to let you know that we're fighting for you. We're here to partner with you all, and I know our cities, our mayor, Mayor Ford is here, and our other four cities, all of our four cities are definitely here to work with our school board, because it impacts us all. When one is down, we're all down. So thank you so much for coming and presenting, and thank you, Madam Chair, for giving him the opportunity to speak before the entire Henry County Government. Thank you.
Commissioner Lewis?
Also thank you for coming and sharing tonight. I was happy to see Principal Sparkle Smith on the list. Her school sits right behind our church, and we've been able to partner with them. A few years ago, we bought all of the students in Locust Grove Elementary School a bookbag with school supplies, 600 of them. And so I think it takes community to be able to help get our children where they need to be. With that said, Pastor Jeff Dawes, he initiated or has an initiative called Pray for Schools, and it is scheduled this year for July the 26th, and I encourage everybody if you can to choose, to go to his website, his church, Stockbridge Community Church, sign up, and go to a school and pray for our young people before school starts. As a pastor, I believe that prayer not only changes things, but it also changes people. And so again, I just encourage you to join in this effort, and on July the 26th, that we would go to a school in Henry County, just to walk the halls, walk the campus, and pray for our young people.
And Dr. Pace, again, I just want to thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule to come and present tonight. You know, a lot of times when people come and speak, they always bring up about our failing schools, and they try to tie growth and our diverse population changes into failing schools. And so I'm glad that you were able to present to show that attendance and those types of things is what contributes a lot to that, and you know, I really appreciate that.
Not a, thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate you having me here today on behalf of our Board of Education and just our community. I want to say thank you for your partnership, thank you to all the municipalities for the work that you, that they do, as well as the county, because you truly support us. We feel that support, and I want everyone to consider what you all are giving us as an investment that will pay out dividends in the near future. It's an investment in our students, it's an investment in our community, and I think it's important that the community knows we're here. We work hard every day, and we invite the community to come out. We are embarking on our next community-inspired strategic plan over the next few months, and I ask the community to come out, share your thoughts, share your feelings, share your concerns, as we develop our next community-inspired strategic plan, because it incorporates the voices of Henry County, and that is who we expect to hold us accountable. Our board is going to hold us accountable for the education of our students. We know our county commissioners and municipalities, our parents. We want to be held accountable by our local Henry County government, board, and our citizens. What they feel, what they want, is most important. So I ask, I challenge you, join us as we have our community meetings, which will begin sometime after September and be ongoing at several of our schools, our high schools' cluster community meetings, to share your thoughts, your vision, your concerns, your aspirations, so we can make sure to capture that in our community-inspired strategic plan, which ultimately leads to the success of our students in a global society. So Madam Chair, I just want to thank you again.
And when do you all have school board meetings? Because just like they come and complain here, I would like for them to come down to the school board and voice their opinion at the school board, because we have no governance over you all. Where is the chair at? Where is, where is that chair at? Where is she at?
Well, Madam Chair, I'll take it. I'll take it. Before they go complain to the chair, they have me. You can, and you have our principals, but if you talk to the principal and you feel like you're not getting a resolution, then you have our assistant superintendents, and you can send me an email. I check the emails. I respond to the emails. We take phone calls. We want to hear any kudos or concerns that you have. And yes, we do have our board meetings monthly on Mondays. We are available. However, you can resolve issues before coming to our board meeting. We are open, we are welcome, we are listening, and we want to help you resolve those issues. And please don't bring it down here to the county government, it's just the education.
Thank you so much. So next item on the agenda is the, is a motion to approve a resolution appointing a member to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Lord Smarcal. The term would be from June 17, starting today, 2025, to March 1, 2029, and the recommendation is Mr. Erg Culpepper. Can I get a motion to approve that resolution?
Motion to approve.
Okay, so got a motion in two seconds. If there is no discussion, all in favor, motion carries. Is Mr. Culpepper here?
Yes.
Show yourself, okay. Thank you for, thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Culpepper. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. If we could have the county manager to please come forward and read the consent agenda.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and board members, and our amazing pillars of the Henry County community. This is your consent agenda for Tuesday, June 17 at 6:30 PM. Under the Henry County Police Department, we have a resolution accepting an allocation in the amount of $3,000 from the United States Secret Service Atlanta Field Office for the Henry County Police Department's participation in the Cyber Fraud Task Force Digital Evidence Forensics Lab. Under SPOS, we have a resolution approving the contribution of fixed assets to the Henry County Water Authority in the amount of $83,842, and authorizing the Chair or County Manager to execute all necessary documents for conveyance of fixed assets relating to the construction of the North Mount Carmel Park Recreation Center, District 5. We also have a resolution approving the contribution of fixed assets to the Henry County Water Authority in the amount of $409,054, and authorizing the Chair or County Manager to execute all necessary documents for conveyance of fixed assets relating to the construction of the Henry County Aquatics Center, County WOD. We also have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 625.56 square feet of right-of-way, a permanent easement of 2,742.59 square feet, and a driveway easement of 3,154.81 square feet, more or less, in Land Lot 204 of the 2nd District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA Section 32-3-4 through 32-3-19 for the Bill Gardner Parkway Whitening Parcel Number 65, District 1 T-SPOS Project. We have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 5,494.41 square feet of right-of-way, a permanent easement of 189.72 square feet, a temporary easement of 2,642.97 square feet, and a driveway easement of 1,916.04 square feet, more or less, in Land Lot 153 of the 7th District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA Section 32-3-4 through 32-3-19, State Route 81, Parcel 23, District 1, and District 3, T-SPOS Project, Archland Property LLC. We have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 2,500.07 square feet of right-of-way, more or less, in Land Lot 106 of the 6th District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA Section 32-3-4 through 32-3-19, Jonesboro Road Whitening Project, Parcel 3, T-SPOS, District 5. We have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 1,442.96 square feet of right-of-way, a permanent easement of 5,931.88 square feet, a temporary easement of 4,685.43 square feet, and a driveway easement of 1,582.00 square feet, more or less, in Land Lot 107 of the 6th District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA Section 32-3-14 through 32-3-19, Jonesboro Road Whitening, Parcel 10, T-SPOS Project, District 5. We have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of a permanent easement of 1,760.88 square feet, and a driveway easement of 3,649.00 square feet, more or less, in Land Lot 109 of the 6th District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA Section 32-3-4 through 32-3-19, Jonesboro Road Whitening, Parcel 50, T-SPOS Project, located in District 5. We have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 6,316.60 square feet of right-of-way, a permanent easement of 5,356.59 square feet, and a driveway easement of 840.00 square feet, more or less, in Land Lot 110 of the 6th District- District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA Section 32-3-4 through 32-3-19, Jonesboro Road Widening Parcel 61, T-SPOS Project, located in District 5. We have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 291.83 square feet of right-of-way, a permanent easement of 840.22 square feet, and a driveway easement of 1,282.44 square feet, more or less, in Landlot 110 of the 6th District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA Section 32-3-4 through 32-3-19, Jonesboro Road Widening Parcel 69, T-SPOS, District 5. We have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 1,142.74 square feet of right-of-way, and a permanent easement of 3,255.21 square feet, more or less, in Landlot 110 of the 6th District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA Section 32-3-4 through 32-3-19, Jonesboro Road Widening Parcel 76, T-SPOS, located in District 5. We have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of a permanent easement of 1,759.46 square feet, more or less, in Landlot 111 of the 6th District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA Section 32-3-4 through 32-3-19, Jonesboro Road Widening Parcel 90, T-SPOS Project, District 5. And, Madam Chair, I'm going to go back, because I believe I read the incorrect square footage for a previous one, and I just want to make sure the record is correct. So, it's going to be letter L on your agenda, and it is a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 291.83 square feet of right-of-way, a permanent easement of 840.22 square feet, and a driveway easement of 1,282.44 square feet, more or less, in Landlot 110 of the 6th District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA Section 32-3-4 through 32-3-19. This is for the Jonesboro Road Widening Parcel 69, T-SPOS, District 5. Madam Chair, this ends the consent agenda.
Thank you, County Manager. I'd like to call for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Okay. Okay. Go ahead.
First of all, thank you for getting through all of that, because that was... That is commendable. But I just wanted to say, just thank you to Rocky and the SPOS team for all of the work that they're doing on Jonesboro Road. I know then there are actually three parcels that were removed just to have language cleaned up, but just for the public in District 5 to see that we are actively moving forward with getting right-of-way for the Jonesboro Road. And I know all of us have been impatiently waiting for a long time, several years at this point. But with those three parcels that were removed, as soon as the language is cleaned up, they'll be brought back, and that'll move us to around 70% of the right-of-way acquisitions. So hopefully, we'll get all of that by the end of this year. So, just want to say thank you very much to your team.
Thank you.
And with that, I move to approve.
Okay. Got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing on all in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Now, we'll move to the regular agenda. Animal Control, an ordinance by the Henry County Board of Commissioners, amending Chapter 3-4 Public Safety.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, and pillars of the community. I'm Captain Michael Hobgood with Animal Care and Control. What I bring to you tonight is a... it's a... it's an amendment to add to the microchipping of impounded animals that we have at the animal shelter. So... The way that... the way that the statute is written is to add it to the code that's currently there. But the purpose of this ordinance is to promote the responsible care and management of pets, facilitate their identification, efficiently return animals to rightful owners, and reduce the number of lost or stray animals within Henry County. Microchipping is not a... it's not a GPS system. Implanting a microchip into an animal allows the ability to place permanent ownership to the animal. This microchip is the size of a grain of rice. Animals cannot even detect the implantation. The chip is then only detectable through the use of a scanner. Currently, all animals that are adopted from our shelter are microchipped. Each of our animal control officers carry a microchip scanner in their vehicles. Once the officer is able to read the microchip, they can find the owner and attempt contact. Most animals are located a short distance from where they live. The officer can then return the animal to its rightful owner without subjecting them to an intake into the shelter. This saves both the animal and the owner time and stress from the stray situation. This will help to decrease the number of animals entering the shelter, which will save lives. Our proposal requires all impounded animals to be microchipped prior to the owner's reclaim, and this can be done at the shelter. The procedure takes less than two minutes and costs $10. And those are charges that would be added to any other charges for the stray. Last year, my personnel handled 524 reclaims to owners. This is an increase from those that we had in just 2023. And I'll be willing to take any questions that y'all might have regarding that.
Any questions from the board? Can I make... can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank y'all.
You have another item for dangerous dog classification, public hearing?
Yes, ma'am. So, the second item is a dangerous dog hearing. This is a procedural thing. You, as the Board of Commissioners, also act as our animal control review board. And so therefore, y'all have purview over once a dog is deemed dangerous as to whether or not that's actually carried out. If a situation occurs where two or more animals are deemed dangerous, only one animal can be owned by any resident that's been deemed dangerous. The deeming of dangerous animals falls on my head as being the Director of Animal Care and Control. So, once I deem an animal dangerous, only one of those animals can be left with the owner if y'all decide to overturn my condemnation as deeming the animal as dangerous. So, many people love all of our animals, and some people only love their animals. But we're all responsible for those animals that are our own. We cannot allow those animals to interfere with the peace and tranquility that we all deserve. When owners neglect their responsibilities, their animals become capable of being a threat to public safety. Georgia law and the Henry County Animal Control Ordinance recognize this fact, and we classify dogs that pose a threat as either dangerous or vicious. The designation of dangerous dog can be given to any dog that bites someone, any dog that aggressively attacks, causes a person to reasonably believe that the dog is going to bite them, even though no bite occurs, or a dog that goes off its own property and kills someone else's pet. The designation of a vicious dog is a more serious of the two classifications. That designation is reserved for dogs that inflict what the law defines as a serious injury, or causes the death of an individual. Once a dog has been classified as either dangerous or vicious, as a matter of public safety, the ordinance imposes additional requirements of the dog owner regarding the containment and restraint of that dog to hopefully ensure that no one else is attacked or injured. The requirements for possession of a dog classified as dangerous were included in the exhibits for this hearing. The details that form my decision to classify these particular dogs are as follows. Henry County Animal Care and Control Department received numerous complaints regarding the American Pit Bull Terrier mixed dogs that we're here for tonight. On 6/28/2024, an animal control officer was dispatched out to 198 Summerfield Lane in reference to an unrestrained dog that was creating a nuisance. A verbal warning was given to Ms. Adorno. On August 6th of 2024, another officer was notified to contact Ms. Adorno. She said that her two pit bulls were missing from her home. A report was written to document the incident. On March 6th of 2025, an animal control officer was notified to call an anonymous complainant about the two dogs from 198 Summerfield Lane. Both dogs were under strain and running through the neighborhood. The officer issued another verbal warning to Ms. Adorno when he verified... On April 7th, 2025, an animal control officer was dispatched to a dog bite at 198 Summerfield Lane. Victim stated that the two dogs that resided at 198 Summerfield Lane were under strained, charged him... charged him as he walked on the road and bit him. The bite was a small puncture wound. The dogs were placed on an in-home quarantine for the 10-day requirement. That's a requirement that's by law. On April 24th of 2025, an animal control officer was dispatched to 204 Summerfield Lane for another dog bite. The victim was walking from his mailbox to his home when two pit bulls attacked him. The victim sustained visible injuries. There's a video of this incident that I will show y'all. On April 25th, an animal control officer was dispatched to 198 Summerfield Lane in reference to their pit bulls running under strain again. In this instance, the dogs broke through a screen door to attack a couple walking their dog. Due to confusion about the current quarantine hold, the owner was allowed to keep the dogs to continue the in-home quarantine, but later a citation was issued for failure of strain. On 4... I'm sorry. On 4/28, the original animal control officer from the quarantine hold was notified of the follow-up, and he went out and collected the dogs. After having called the police department due to the belligerent dog owner, the dogs were placed in the truck and taken to the shelter. Three citations were issued. On May 6th, an owner came to the shelter to reclaim their dogs. It was explained to her that due to the continued issues and aggression by the dogs, they will have to be deemed as dangerous. The field services supervisor advised that she would sign over... if she would sign over possession of the male dog, since it was the primary aggressor, we would allow her to reclaim the female dog. The only restriction was that she would have to follow the same requirements as outlined for dangerous dogs. But the owner refused to separate the pair and requested this hearing. So, it's due to the continued irresponsibility of the dog's owner and the extreme concerns caused to public safety, I asked these dogs to be deemed as dangerous and full custody to be remanded to the Henry County Animal Care and Control. These are the two bites. We both have pictures of the two bites, and then I have a video of the two bites... of two of the bites that were taken. This is the one where they broke through the screen door and attacked someone who was walking their dog. You can see the couple walking their dog. And then the owner's two dogs come up and try to attack her. And like a lot of people will do is they will try to pick up their dog to prevent the other dogs from getting to them, which actually adds to the dangerousness, because then the dogs will actually attack the other dog owner trying to protect their dog. It's missing the first one. This is the one that attacked the gentleman as he was going to his mailbox, and you can see the two dogs as they run around him and bite at him. And one of them ended up getting him on the arm before they finally retreated and allowed him to go into his house. So, I'll be willing to take any questions as it relates to this. Any of the Commissioners have any questions?
Okay. So, this is a public hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
So, if we have... we need to set the clock. If anyone wanted to speak on behalf of this, if you want to come forward? Yes. Can you state your name?
My name is Geisha. Go ahead. My name is Geisha Adorno, and I'm the owner of Beauty and Beast. As you can see in the video, Beast did jump, did bite the gentleman. Beauty never did. Beauty never jumped. Beauty never growled. Beauty never barked. Beauty never charged on anybody. She ran up to the neighbor who has an aggressive dog. We live three doors down. I've been in this neighborhood for two years. This is the most my dogs has gotten out since the beginning of the year to where we at right now. I do have a new member in my family. This is the reason why the dogs do come out. She opens the door, they come out. For me, I do not, as much as it hurts to let go of one of my dogs, I don't have a problem letting go of Beast, but Beauty should not be deemed dangerous, because she did not bite anybody. She did not display no type of aggression whatsoever, and she has, never has. Beast is not neutered, so I feel like that's a factor. But like, again, I'm okay with losing him than losing her, because, again, she's not an aggressive animal. She's not an aggressive dog. I've had them since they were eight weeks old. So, this is a little bit hard for me and my kids. I have five kids who adore these dogs. But, again, I'm willing just to lose one, not both. And she should not be deemed dangerous whatsoever. I have neighbors in our community who emailed... they sent an email, but I don't know how to send that to you guys, who their kids play with my dogs. They've babysat my dogs. They've housed it with my dogs. Never an issue until this particular month in April. Prior to that, yes, they were coming outside due to the new member in my family, which is my niece. She's non-verbal, artistic. And she just opens the door, and that's how they keep coming out. That's all I have to say for the board, though.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I sit?
How much time is left on that? Does anybody else want to come and speak with regards to the public hearing? Okay. If you would step forward. You can have a seat, ma'am.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just for clarification, that was in favor of. So, at this point, we just need to ask if those are individuals in opposition to it.
Okay. So, are we in favor or opposition?
Okay.
So, we're done with the favor. In favor. We're done with that?
The individual that just spoke is the owner of the two dogs, correct?
Yeah.
So, she was presenting her case to the board. Now, if there's anyone wishing to speak in opposition to that, then we need to allow them that opportunity to present.
Okay.
So, I think, if I may... so, the classification is for being a dangerous dog, right? So, that means if the owner, she's not in opposition, right?
She was in opposition.
She was, right.
So, we did opposition first before we did in favor.
I'm confused.
When we do the public hearing, we should do who's in favor of classifying as a dangerous dog. So, we should have done that first, and then have the 10 minutes for those in opposition.
So, she's in opposition, so we're doing the in favor.
Yeah, we can continue.
So, Madam Chair, let me apologize. It appears, because this is a dangerous dog public hearing, there is not an opportunity for the public to come and speak in opposition. So, Animal Care and Control presents their case, and then the property owner has an opportunity to speak. If I'm incorrect, the county attorney will need to provide clarification on that.
So, are we allowed to ask questions of the officer or any victims that were involved in this? Okay. Are you a victim? Okay. I have... I want to know, did the dog attack or bite you, I guess? Yes.
Thank you, board. My name is Nancy Redding, and I'm the one that lives at 204 Summerfield Lane. And the gentleman that was bit on the arm did have injuries, and it brought blood. He had to go to the doctor. We had to go through all the rabies testing. If this... if I would have been out in that driveway five minutes earlier, those dogs would have attacked me. I couldn't even get up. They would have just... they would have just bit me. They're continuously out. And I just don't... I would like to ask that you please... And I just don't, I, I would like to ask that you please, please deem this as a dangerous dog. It, it's just, it's in our county, yes, there are kids that live on our street, and what does it take to, we don't want to see a child get mauled. We're lucky that we were able to get away from these dogs. But with these children living on the street, we just need to deem these dogs as being dangerous.
So, so Captain, are they not keeping the dogs secured?
Yes, ma'am. Most of the violations were all failure to restrain violations. They're also not being kept up with their shots. They're also not being, they're, they're not microchipped. So we're having to, we're having to deal with this on a regular basis. And the two run together, they, they, the, the beast, the, the male dog is more prone to biting, but the female, she will nip at the other person as well. Sometimes when dogs are together, they get into a pack mentality, and the more dogs, the more, the more aggressive that they will become. So. And that's, that's why they're, that, once they're running free, then they're running as a pack with each other.
And what is our, our ordinance on keeping dogs secure?
They have to be leashed. If it's a dog, it has to be on a leash, or it has to be restrained by something like a fence. And these dogs were not restrained at any of the times when they violated our ordinance.
Any questions from the board? Ma'am, not unless, you just give us a minute. Let me, let, my commissioner speak. Okay.
Anyway, that's my comments.
Commissioner Lewis, you have a question?
No, I just had a question for the owner. I know, I can't remember how many incidents total there were for the dogs not being restrained.
Eight?
Eight.
Yes, sir.
So I, I guess my question was, I, I think I heard you state that there was a new member in the household, and that's the reason why they were, you know, kept getting out. So I just. Can you, can you come up to the?
Ma'am, you need to come to the microphone.
Thank you.
No problem. No problem at all.
Since my niece has been there, she's moved in in December. The dogs started coming outside and becoming what they keep saying a nuisance coming outside, being without a leash and all that, only because she opens the door. It's not that they're in the backyard, which is fenced in. It's not that they're in the backyard and no one's watching them, and we just letting them out. When Adeya, she's non-verbal, artistic, she's only four, she opens the door. She learned how to unlock the door, so she unlocks the door, and she proceeds to go outside, and they go outside with her, and then they take off. It's been happening since she's been there. So she's been there since December. I've been in this home for two years already. It was never a problem. I've never had an issue with Beauty and Beast. Now, his choice of words that they were not up to date on vaccines. We moved from Florida. They were up to date on their vaccines, all of their vaccinations. So you don't now sit here and say that they're not vaccinated. They definitely were when we lived in Florida. I moved here, I did not know as a new dog owner to these two pets. I've never had a pet before, Beauty and Beast. Um, so I'm learning just as much as anybody is. I'm learning with my dogs. I've never had a pet before, so regarding them not being, if they're on a leash, if I go outside and walk them, they don't escape from me. They're on leash. Um, I was told the last time that they get out to buy the shock and all that, we ordered it, and then they came and picked the dogs up. They came and picked the dogs. Everything they asked me to do with the dog, within three days, they came and got the dogs up. So nothing that they asked me to do was done. So we can't sit here and say, maybe, um, I didn't get the chance to put the call on them because y'all took them. I didn't get the chance to do the yard fencing because y'all took them. I didn't get the chance to neuter the beasts because y'all took them. My original plan for Beauty and Beast were not to neuter them, but due to the situation and being told that that can cause them to be more, a little bit aggressive on the male part, I was willing to do that, but they came and picked up the dogs.
Did you bring the dogs from Florida?
I bought the dogs from Florida, yes, ma'am.
Okay, then, so you took care of them in Florida, but you say you got here and you didn't know?
No, when I got.
What's the difference?
In Florida, they.
I'm trying to understand.
I took care of them.
You said that they were vaccinated there, and you took care of them there, but when you got here, you didn't know?
I didn't know that dogs needed to be vaccinated every year. That's, that's, that's what I'm trying to tell you. I'm a new dog owner myself. Like, I, this is new. Me being a pet owner to any animal, Beauty and Beast are my first. So I know that they needed to get vaccinated. I did that with their, were three months, six months, but I didn't know anything else, like every year they have to be vaccinated. I didn't know that when you move somewhere, you need a, a current rabies shot. They don't go out. They be at home or in the backyard. I didn't even know that you need to get rabies shots every year. Like, I don't know that.
So, so you don't know what it entails to be a, a dog owner?
Well, I know what it entails to be a dog owner to a certain degree, what I'd known from Florida and the vet in Florida, but again, I was not told that you have to vaccinate your dogs every year.
Research what you needed to do in Georgia?
No, ma'am, I did not. I don't, I did not.
And who is the person that's letting them, letting them out?
Adeya, she's.
How, how old is she?
She's only four. She's just started unlock, she learned how to unlock the front door.
And so she unlocks the door, and she goes out. So who's watching her?
Well, she goes outside. Again, I have a fence.
I, I know, but who's watching her when she's opening the door and letting the doors, the dogs out?
I have cameras in my house. I mean, there's three adults in this house, so I mean, when she opens the door, we hear the door open, we go right to the front door. Adeya's right there in my front patio. The dogs already ran out. I'm right after them. There's never been a case where the dogs were running for hours and I wasn't around. The moment those dogs start to run, I'm outside running after them. Like, again, I'm not gonna, I'm not asking for both dogs back in the home. I'm only asking for Beauty. Beauty should not be deemed dangerous again. According to y'all law in Georgia, you have to bite somebody. You have to aggressively charge at somebody. You growling, you barking. She did not display any of that in both videos. Not once you see that in a video with Beauty. With Beast, I see it. And the second incident where the lady was walking and they came out the screen, that's not what happened, and no one was bitten on video. No one was bitten. The dogs did not jump at her, none of that. They wanted to play with her dog, and that's not the first time with that particular dog. So I don't know what else to say.
But your dog shouldn't be loose regardless.
I understand that, ma'am, but if the child opens the door and the dogs go.
You can have a seat.
You can hang them.
Captain, how, good.
I have a quick question.
Okay, one second. I want, I wanted to ask him, when did these incidents start?
They started in June of last year.
June of last year?
Yes, ma'am.
What breed of dogs are they?
They're pit bull mixes.
And I just wanted to say, I bred the American Pit Bull Terrier for 20-something years. Now, I would be the first to say that they are the most sweetest dogs if they're raised right, but they also can be the most deadly dogs if they are not bred correctly. And I think as a owner, we have to make sure that we take full responsibility of our animals. And even, I understand that the four-year-old is opening the door, but even in that, when our situations or circumstances change, we have to adjust as well to make sure that we are remaining responsible owners. Because pit bulls in the wrong hands can be deadly, and we have to make sure and certain that we are taking every measure and every precaution to make certain, because those dogs, once they get started, it's hard to stop them if you don't have the expertise in stopping them from, you know, doing whatever they do. And so, you know, my heart goes out to you and your animals, but we have to make sure, you know, that we are responsible in the ownership of whatever types of animals that we have.
Just had a question from 35.
Yes, sir.
5625, it mentions that had she, or the dog owner been more of the kind of dangerous dog, it would appear that the male dog would have been kept as dangerous dog, and she could have had the female dog, is that correct on that time?
Yes, with the restrictions that, or the same restrictions that if y'all chose to give her the female dog back, those will be the same restrictions. But we offered those to her to begin with, to keep her from having to pay for the stay of the animals for us to hold them. Because she, she has court cases that are coming up as well, so she still has to face the court for the charges that are against her.
So the clarification, I want to make sure we're not.
Yes, sir.
Agreeing to that, is just we're agreeing that both dogs are dangerous, and then they would go into custody to?
Yes, sir.
Y'all, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And you said this started when?
Uh, June of 2024.
So that community or that neighborhood's been dealing with this since a year?
Yes, ma'am. And to that point, we, you know, we, we are very vigilant, and when we get called out, by the time we write citations, we have spoken with the owners sometimes three, four, or five times, pleading with them to correct the problem and working with them to try to get the problem corrected and giving them solutions. And if we find animals that are unvaccinated, we teach them and educate them on all the shots that they need to have to remain current so that they can begin to comply with the law. Because our job is to get compliance. We want them complying. Our shelter is full enough with animals. We don't need to bring any others inside our shelter. So our goal is not to fill our shelter with animals, it's to get them back to their rightful owners, but they've got to be responsible, hence the microchipping that y'all just passed.
So do, what is the interaction with these dogs with staff as they are? Because we did confiscate them.
Yes, sir. I, I can bring my shelter operations manager up to the front. He can attest to, to the behavior of the animals since we've had them. Burke, can you come up here? This is Burke Merchant. He's my shelter operations supervisor. It's his people that are the kennel technicians that take care of them day in and day out.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. They're on and off as far as their temperament goes. They, I, I would consider them like resource gardeners in their kennels. They're really aggressive. We do have to move them occasionally. We'll catch holes instead of leashes. So just to say that they are friendly. They have issues, we'll put it that way.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to call for a motion to classify the dogs as dangerous dogs.
Make motion to the room. Second.
If there's no further discussion, all in favor. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Community Development Block Grant. Ms. Shannon?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and members of the board, as well as the pillars of the community. This evening, I'm presenting for you all and also calling for the public hearing to receive comments on our proposed FY25 through 2029 Consolidated Plan, as well as the FY25 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Department, specifically referring to the programs of the Community Development Block Grant, as well as the Home Investment Program. Please first be aware, the Annual Action Plan describes specific projects in which the county proposes to utilize its CDBG home funds to carry out priorities established in the county's consolidated plan. The consolidated plan is a plan that we review every five years and provide updates. The Annual Action Plan also provides an evaluation and update on, from the previous program year's funding, as well as activities. Please notice that our Citizens Participation Plan, we launched it in September, in, excuse me, January of this year, when we published the Notice of Funding Availability for the FY25-26 Public Service, Public Facility and Infrastructure Improvements and Housing Rehabilitation Application. Since that time, staff held three mandatory application workshops. That is for agencies and individuals seeking to apply for CDBG funding. Applications were due no later than Friday, February 28th. Eleven public service and four public facility applications were received. In March of this year, we announced the scheduling of our community needs assessment meetings. A total of seven needs assessment meetings were held, starting March 12th through March 28th. During the meetings, participants were provided a survey and asked to identify two of the most important needs that they themselves had experienced, or those that they had observed from others in their community. The surveys were also made available in the office, on the county website, and emailed to community stakeholders, state and local government entities and departments. This also includes nonprofits, advocacy groups, and health and human service providers. Surveys gathered information on the vision, population served, and unmet needs of agencies and its clientele. Most recently, on Tuesday, May 13th, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development announced its FY2025 funding allocations for Community Development Block Grant, as well as the Home Investment Partnership Programs. Henry County is expecting to receive just over 1.175 million for Community Development Block Grant Program, and 450,000 for its home program. You'll see in the slide that we are proposing to utilize just under 500,000, being 490,000 for public facility and infrastructure improvements. For housing rehab, we are proposing 200,000. For public housing modernization, 75,000. For public services, 175,000. Please note, public service activities is capped federally at 15%. For planning and administration, we are proposing 235,000. Also, please note here, federally, there is a cap on planning and admin at 20% of the annual allocation. We have unexpendant CDBG funding that we are seeking to reprogram from FY2022 and FY2023 from economic development. It was for facade improvements totaling 150,000. We are seeking to reprogram these to public facility and infrastructure improvements. For the home program, again, I mentioned, we are expecting to receive 450,000. Administration cost is capped federally at 10%. We are proposing 45,000, with the balance of 405,812 dollars, give or take, being allocated to community housing development organizations, commonly known as CHODOs. I am going to pause here. I'll take any questions that you may have. Before we open the floor to the public, I'd like to ask my teammate member, excuse me, Mrs. Raven Bodine, to come before you all and present some updates and some background on some of our largest projects currently underway. This is where we are anticipating the proposed funding for the public facility and infrastructure to continue additional phases on existing programs and activities. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, pillars of the community. I have for you this evening photos of the Greenview Homes subdivision. This is a project that has been with our department for, I believe, since 2019. We began this project in the engineering phase, working with DOT and Stormwater on the engineering and development of that. It's currently under construction at the moment. Here are some photos of the construction that is ongoing. They anticipate this to be completed by the end of July. This is just for the Stormwater improvements. With our FY2025 funds, we are allocating those funds for the paving of that subdivision. With the several years of funding, we're looking at using about 1.1 million dollars of CDBG funds, that's over the course of several years, to complete this project. This is a large project. Overall, it's looking to be about 3.2 million dollars for the, for the engineering, the Stormwater improvements, and the paving. Additionally, the city of Hampton has proposed Additionally, the city of Hampton has proposed a project for West King Road. This would be for the Rosenwald, um, West King, Daniel Street, and George Street, um, area. On West King Road, they are wanting to put in sidewalks, Stormwater, curb and gutter. There's a lot of residents that walk that area to get to downtown Hampton. So, that improvement would make that a little easier for them. And then here are the plans for that particular project.
Thank you, Raven. If I may, I'd like to call for any public comments.
Are there any public comments regarding the CDBG block grant?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Comment.
Okay.
Uh, I just want to say thank you very much for always having a well-organized, uh, plan with what you are doing. Um, you all do a great job, and we just really appreciate the efforts you're doing.
Thank you all for your support.
And I know that Commissioner Price is happy about the green.
Yes.
Uh, that is long, long overdue, and we appreciate the work that you guys are doing. And, uh, with that, um, there's no vote required. It's just a public hearing.
Yes, not at this time. We will be coming back before you all. I believe the first meeting in July.
August.
August. Thank you. The first meeting in August to present this before the board, um, for requesting your consideration. Um, at this time, the draft plan is available for review, and we will continue to accept public comment. Thank you.
Would you guys like this, uh, plan shared with you all, please? Okay. Shannon, can you make sure that the commissioners get a copy of this?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. Next item is SPLUS.
Good evening, uh, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and, uh, pillars of Henry County. This is our, we have a few resolutions. Our first one is, uh, resolution for the board commissioners to approve the award of bid number 25-70. It's our third resurfacing batch. Uh, and this goes to a blunt construction company in the amount of 11,945,557 dollars and 75 cents. SPLUS 6 was approved by voters in 2024. Uh, seal bids were solicited through the purchasing department. We received five seal bids. Uh, this were for districts two, three, and four. Uh, as a reminder, we did approve, the board approved District one and five previously. And those are the amounts. We have 50 rows in District two for the amount of a little bit over 5.7 million. District three, 2.4 million and change. Uh, District four, 23 rows, uh, for over, close to 4 million dollars. This is our District two. Uh, I'm not going to go through all the rows. There's a lot of rows, but we'll just go through the subdivisions. Patilla Point, uh, Frambrook. And you can see also the ratings, uh, on the side. As you can see, they're pretty, pretty bad ratings. Uh, anything under 60 is, uh, is like a school grade. It's like, like an F, right? So, uh, Glenlog, Glenlog, Twin Pines, Falling Waters, Cottonwood, and Summit Escarpore. Uh, Coatsworth Manor, Rumbridge. And those are some other roads that are not part of the subdivision. And everything that you see in red, as you can see, those are all the, all the subdivisions or the roads that are going to be, uh, resurfaced. So, District five, it goes, as you can see, on both sides of the interstate, so we kind of cover a little bit on, on both sides. District three. You have, uh, Copeland Estates and White Acres. Winfield, James Creek. Crossroad Valley, Pleasant Grove. And everything that you see in blue on the top of the screen, that's, uh, those are the roads. District four, we have Abok Cove, Salem Ridge, Brandon Estates, White Oaks Hollow, Barrington, Alconyers Estate, Cotton Fields, and then we have other roads that are not in the side of the subdivision. And everything in green, as you can see, are, are the roads to be resurfaced. Uh, just want to make, make a point that, uh, since SPLUS 6 started, we have, hopefully the board approved this, we will have 42 million dollars, a little bit over 42 million dollars worth of resurfacing. We do have three contractors, which is really good because all three can be working at the same time. We just had a pre-construction for the first one, uh, and they're looking at starting on that first batch, uh, July the 7th week. So, once this is approved and goes through the, uh, process of insurance and providing contract sign agreement, we'll do a pre-construction as well, and then we'll start construction. So, hopefully by the end of the summer, you'll see all contractors working on all over the county paving, paving roads.
Okay. Um, before I call for a motion, are there any comments from, uh, board members?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just want to make a comment to, uh, Rocky and Bert. Thank you guys so much. Um, as we were going over the list, um, uh, one thing that I really like, what you guys stated, is like when you go into the subdivisions, you make sure you go ahead and do the subdivision.
Correct.
Um, because if not, you're piecemealing it, and then you're going to get calls. Um, it's not a great look. Um, so I do appreciate you guys doing outstanding work, um, when it comes to doing that. Um, I, I have a lot of roads, so, um, but I definitely just want to say thank you, um, to what you and Bert are doing to ensure that our constituents, you know, make sure our roads are taken care of. So, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair.
I just want to thank you as well, and just want to clarify, all three contractors will be doing the FDRs.
Correct. There's, there's, there's a combination. There's some roads that are FDR. There's some roads that are going to be milling and resurfacing. But yes, there's, a lot of the subdivisions are going to be FDR. Because as you know, back, back in the 80s, 70s, and 80s, a lot of the roads were just paved on dirt. So, that's why we're doing, and FDR for the, for the citizens, just to remind what FDR, it's not, it's not the precedent, right? It's a full-depth reclamation. And it's, it's the process. It's the process where we mill the existing pavement, because there's no base, no, there's nothing solid underneath. Uh, there's no GAB or rock, which, those are what the new standards, uh, the current standards. So, we mix the, the asphalt, the meal as, the meal, the asphalt, and they mix it with it, with the dirt, and then they add cement. And they mix all that, they compact it, they add water, and roll it. And after seven days, it looks like dirt, and it's, you know, citizens understand that. It may look real bad, but it's going to be a solid base. I'm like, you cannot go in there with a backhoe and try to dig it. It, it, you're going to hit a solid rock, basically. And after that, then they'll be paving. And, and subdivisions, we'll put two inches of asphalt. On county roads, we'll be putting, uh, two layers of asphalt. We'll put binder and topping. So, you'll have about three and a half inches of asphalt on, on county roads.
I'm glad you explained that, Rocky, because I've gone through this before with residents. There's, it's a process.
It's a process.
So, we don't just strip a road and lay new asphalt the next day, and it's done. So, there typically is a week.
It's about a week.
About a week.
Correct.
You have to sit there. And I know, I've, you know, I've had some residents say, you know, why is it taking so long? Like, you, you're not doing anything. Like, no, we have to let, have to let it sit.
Let it cure. You got to cure.
About a week. So, so thank you for explaining that process.
Thank you, Commissioner. And the thing is, if, if we pave on top of those bad, you know, cracks, just like painting a house, if you have bad paint in a house and you paint it over, what you're going to get? The paint is going to be bad again. So, so we want to make sure that we, we attack the, you know, what is bad, which is the base. And doing that, the roads are going to last a lot longer.
I also want to acknowledge that, um, Rocky, the work that you're doing, even with our cities, because like I know in my district, I have the city of Stockbridge, and they are here. And even their public works director, Mr. Desus Aaron, um, just want to say the good work that you all are doing to communicate, collaborate, um, to make sure that everything is just moved going from cities to the county. Because nobody really knows. They just ride. Um, so I just want to say thank you to our, um, city of Stockbridge, um, public works director as well, working diligently with, um, our county, um, staff to get things done. So, definitely want to give kudos to you all. And if...
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. No further discussion, all in favor. Motion carries. Rocky, can you make sure that this is emailed out to the?
We will.
I know specifically to the district commissioners that this impact.
We will. That way, they can, they can have the whole list.
Right, they can have it. So, if their constituents reach out, then they'll, they'll be able to, to answer any questions. Thank you.
Uh, the next resolution is, uh, is a resolution of the board commissioners to authorize, uh, the county church to sign a Georgia Department of Transportation Construction Agreement for the Rockaway Road Widening Project. Uh, this, this is a T-S plus project, and T-S plus was approved by voters in November of 2021. Rockaway Road Widening is an approved T-S plus major transportation project, and this is our second T-S plus po, T-S plus project going to construction out of seven. Henry County agrees to abide by all state and federal regulations, rules, laws, and guidelines during the construction of the Rockaway Road Widening Project. The low bid construction of this project is 35,297,995 dollars. The Georgia Department of Transportation will provide a maximum reimbursement of 20,407,94 dollars to the Henry County. Any amount above and beyond the 20,000, 20,407,94 dollars will be funded by the T-S plus project account of Rockaway. I would like to also mention that we need to amend this resolution as provided to, to the board commissioners, uh, because Henry County is required to pay 30,000 to Georgia Department of Transportation, or GDOT, for the construction oversight for this project. Also, I'd like to make, uh, mention that the funding is coming from Georgia Department of Transportation, not, not ARC. I think the, the resolution mentions ARC. ARC is who we apply for, for the federal funding. But the funding, this contract is between the county and Georgia Department of Transportation. I will take any questions at this moment.
So, is this two different resolutions?
Yes, ma'am. We, we have an agreement between the Georgia Department of Transportation.
So, do we need, we need to vote on each resolution, correct? Okay. Um, the first resolution is approving the construction contract with the Georgia Department of Transportation for Rockaway Road Widening. That's the first resolution, correct? Step, okay. Is there any, um, questions from the board, um, before we move forward with the motion for this? Okay. So, can I get a motion to approve the resolution for the contract between the county and GDOT?
Make a motion to approve the resolution for the contract between the county and GDOT.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. No, no further discussion, all in favor. Okay. That motion carries. Now, the next resolution is the actual bid award of the construction of Rockaway Road Widening to Wilson Construction Management in the amount of the 35-plus million.
35,297,995 dollars. Uh, yes, Chair. So, this is our second resolution. Uh, I think it's a long-waited resolution to get to here. Uh, as I mentioned before, it is a T-S plus project, uh, voted by the citizens back in 20, November of 2021. Uh, construction of Rockaway Road Widening is approved T-S plus project. Uh, seal bids were solicited through the purchasing department, bid number 25-61 for the construction of this project. We received nine seal bids, and they were reviewed. Uh, and this project is 2.6 miles long, and it starts at Eagles Landing Parkway and goes all the way north to North Henry Parkway, or State Route 138.
Okay. So, I know that we have Mayor Ford here, and, uh, so, isn't this a joint project that we're doing with the city of, of Stockbridge, and they put some money in as well?
Correct. So, the funding mechanism for this project, we do have, as I mentioned, as the board just approved, 20,407,94 from Georgia Department of Transportation.
Okay.
Uh, 10,996,201 dollars are coming from our Henry County T-S plus account.
Okay.
Uh, in additional, we have 4 million dollars coming from the city of Stockbridge. Uh, when we did the T-S plus, we did an intergovernmental agreement with the cities, and, uh, city of Stockbridge provided this amount for the grand total, as you can see, of the 35,297,995 dollars.
Mayor Ford, would, do you have any comments, or anything you'd like to come forward? Thank you for coming out tonight, and this is a long time coming.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Madam Vice Chair, Board Commissioners here, and citizens of, uh, Henry County. I couldn't say Stockbridge, but Henry County, right? It's all, all one county, right? Henry Strong. Uh, well, absolutely. This is a great project that we're joining with the county with, and, uh, I know this is, uh, is a good thing that we need to do. Obviously, due to county, all the cities need to continue partnership with our county government to do the best we can for our citizens in our area. And so, I look forward to future projects together as well. And, uh, this is great. Matter of fact, this is connect us to the, the two, uh, big streets there, uh, 138 and Henry, North Henry Boulevard and Eagles Land Parkway, but also gives us, uh, a way to get to, uh, Piedmont Henry, our major hospital. And so, uh, so we've got a great hospital that's growing, expanding. It's need, we need that hospital, obviously, in the area. But I appreciate it, and, uh, God bless you all. And I have to say this, is Stockbridge is where the community connects.
There you go. I was waiting for that.
I waited for that. I waited for that. Okay. So, with that being said, I guess I'd like to call for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion again that we will, um, set the resolution approving the, uh, bid award to Wilson Construction Management. Second.
Okay. Got a motion and two seconds. Uh, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Rocky. What's next?
Our last one, uh, let's see. I'm going the wrong way. My bad. Going the wrong way. Let's see. All right. Our last one is a resolution authorizing the Henry County Water Authority Utility Relocation for the construction of a Henry Parkway at Henry Connector. Uh, the board already approved the construction. Uh, this is for the roundabout right here by the Mercer, uh, intersection. So, this resolution is, uh, basically, uh, for the relocation of the water authority. Uh, this is a SPLUS 6 project, and it's in District five. And it's a joint project with, uh, City of McDonough. As you can see, this is the breakdown that we have, uh, since we're doing everything half and half with that project, 50/50 percent. So, the county portion is going to come from the Henry County Water Authority, District five revenue savings bonds, and then the, the other half is coming from the City of McDonough. We did have, like I mentioned, an intergovernmental agreement, so we're going to share that cost. And the total cost for the relocation, as you can see, is 258,695 dollars and 10 cents. And that's the location. Uh, there's, it's going to be a two-lane roundabout. Uh, and once Georgia Department of Transportation finishes their project on State Route 20, then that entire connectivity will be completed, and they'll be providing access from State Route 20 all the way to, uh, 155 and also to the Aquatic Center that is also under construction. So, this is a gate.
So it's a great gateway into the aquatic. I'll take any questions.
This is great. This shows another partnership with one of our cities, the city of McDonough. And we appreciate that partnership with them, and this is going to really help with traffic flow along that corridor. So really excited about that. Commissioner Lewis did?
No, everything you said. So just excited to be doing a joint project with the city of McDonough. Even more excited that it's going to help citizens get to our new aquatic center, which should be ready next May. So just really looking forward to that. When you look at the things that Henry County is doing and also our cities are doing, we are definitely trying to raise the bar for our residents and give, you know, residents something to do, make sure that our youth are engaged. When you look at projects like the North Mount Carmel Recreation Center and also the Aquatic Center, the new senior center that will be coming to District Two, we are trying to raise the standard for our residents. So just thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you.
With that, I move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Planning and zoning. Kenta.
Madam Chair, prior to Mayor Ford leaving, we wanted to get a picture with the board.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, my apologies.
Okay, all right, okay, all right. Let's do that. Let's do that now. Walk Kenta, get set up.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Oh, they cold.
He's so cold.
He's real blessed, huh?
Special pride, okay.
Bring us home, Kenta. Come on.
All right. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, and pillars of the Henry County community. The item before use of property located north of Jonesboro Road, west of the intersection of Case in the Way and Mount Carmel Road. Property is 33.34 plus or minus acres. Currently zoned mixed-use as of June 2022. The subject property was rezoned to mixed-use for the purpose of an apartment and commercial uses, mixed-use development. The request before you tonight is to modify those existing zoning conditions as it relates to the commercial spaces fronting Jonesboro Road and the elimination of 46 apartment units. Incorporate a green space plan between the commercial spaces and apartments, and modify language for the drive-through to allow a little bit of flexibility, not too much for the use of specialty stores and shops. Here are some elevations of the commercial space that will be fronting Jonesboro Road and the green space plan to go between the apartments and commercial space shown here. Elements of this green space plan shows seating area, native tall grasses, lights, outdoor tables and chairs, cornhole boards, and water fountain. Staff does recommend denial of the applicant's request as proposed and instead approval of some modified conditions list shown. The red indicates the recommended changes of the original condition list. These changes reflect the intent of the applicant team while also including updated language to some of these conditions and incorporate some of those plans that were shown, plans and elevations that were shown tonight. Just highlighting a few specific changes. Condition three references the new commercial elevations and the elimination of those 46 units that were initially part of the mixed-use spaces there. Condition 19, I'll get back to. Condition 25 incorporates the green space, green space plan that's shown tonight, sorry, subject to planning and zoning staff approval. That condition will require that that green space plan be very similar to what was presented here. Going back to condition 19 regarding those prohibited uses, again, providing some, a little bit of flexibility as it relates to those quote-unquote "fast food restaurants." I want to be clear that this language maintains the original intent in 2022 to prohibit fast food restaurants. This language would allow that flexibility for some of those specialty snack and beverage stores and baked goods shops. With that, that does conclude my presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
I save my questions. We're going to go ahead and do the public hearing.
Okay.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor has a collective total of 10 minutes to address the board.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and pillars of the community. My name's Alex Brock with Smith Gambrell Russell, here on behalf of Vista Residential Partners. Okay. Here on beha... Oh, there we go. Here on behalf of Vista Residential Partners, joining me tonight is Chase Beasley, Managing Director with Vista. And we are here tonight to request a zoning modification of the existing conditions of zoning. Importantly, to remove the 46 residential units in the mixed-use building that was approved in 2022 with the zoning resolution. Here you can see an aerial map of the property. Phase one, the development was constructed in two phases. Phase one consisted of the multifamily development, which you can see here, the buildings are constructed. They're actually currently being leased. Phase two is closer to Jonesboro Road. It's undeveloped in this picture. And here's the site plan of phase two, which is the focus of our request tonight. Phase two in the original 2022 approval contemplated two mixed-use buildings consisting of approximately 31,000 square feet, or excuse me, 32,000 square feet of commercial with 42, or 46 residential units over the top of the commercial uses, with two additional retail parcels. We've had some difficulty in gaining interest for the development of the residential units over the commercial. Part of that is due to the small number of units, in addition to the location of the units above what we're anticipating to be a busy commercial center, as well as adjacent to a highly-traveled roadway in Jonesboro Road. The interest from developers for those units, as well as potential interest from tenants for those units, has not materialized since our original rezoning, and our request is to be able to remove those units. Along with that request, there were some changes to the conditions, mostly to adopt the updated site plan, as well as this green space concept plan. What we are proposing with the green space concept plan is to activate the green space in between phase one and phase two. Our intent there is to draw residents from multifamily towards the commercial, to make it more interactive with commercial, and create pedestrian connectivity between the two uses. Here on this plan, you can see the prior elevations for the mixed-use buildings. This elevation shows the commercial on the ground floor with the residential units above. And what we are proposing is to remove those residential units. We are keeping the intent and the feel of the architectural the same. We are actually adding a higher parapet to add a little bit of height to the commercial buildings there along Jonesboro Road, but the architectural flavor and style is maintained from the original intent of the rezoning. Here you can see an overall concept of how the phase one multifamily to the rear would interact with the commercial in phase two towards Jonesboro Road. And in this concept, you can see the residential units removed, so it is just a purely commercial building there along Jonesboro Road. Along with our request, there were several conditions that we asked to have modified, mostly dealing with the updated plans, but also as well as restrictions on, or clarifications on certain uses that were restricted within the property. We've worked extensively with Kenta and Director Kirk on modifying those conditions, along with input from Commissioner Price to staff on those conditions. Those conditions have been modified. That's what's before you tonight. We are in full agreement with what staff has proposed. That is before you tonight. Staff has recommended approval of our application with their conditions, and we would request the same. With that, I will, in my presentation, reserve any remaining time for rebuttal, and I'm here for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. So next, we would have anyone that wish to come to speak in opposition of the project. Please come forward. We don't have the conservative Henry people here tonight. Okay. Well, that ends public comment. I have a few questions, if you don't mind.
I just want to ensure, I see the proposed rendering that you have displayed, but can you go back a couple of slides where the components of the green space is itemized?
Yes.
There. It's not shown or depicted on the proposed rendering. I just want to ensure that all of the things that are listed here are incorporated into this green space area.
Yes, so the resolution... The final resolution will include the green space plan, so that, you know, whenever these plans are submitted with our permits, this green space plan is going to be right there with it.
Okay.
So staff knows what to look for, so we... Yes.
Okay. That's all I have.
So Stephanie, the plan that is up here on the screen, that needs to be part of the record to make sure that this green space is going to have the things that are listed here. So I want to make sure that that is, all of that is recorded in the record. The other thing is, Kenta, can you go back to the slides where the conditions on 19, I believe it was?
Yes, ma'am.
So the following shall be prohibited: gas stations, thank God, drive-through, fast food restaurants with kitchens preparing hot meals. So when you talk about the N I I C S and you list that number there, give me some examples of what we're talking about.
The N I I C S codes grant and categorize some of these uses: snack and non-alcoholic beverage bars. Forgive me, I was actually not necessarily prepared for this, but, you know, when we review these conditions, we'll certainly refer back to these codes as specified. Snack and non-alcoholic beverage bars, off the top of my head, that would include some of like Starbucks and Einstein bagels and things like that.
What about retail, like boutiques and those types of things? Would that be an option as well?
Not under those N I I C S codes, but I would, just to provide a little bit of clarification, retail uses in those boutique shops, boutique shops, that is not a condition that we have as a prohibited use.
Okay.
With this conditions list, those boutique shops and whatnot could go into this space.
Okay.
Managing, the specific code mentioned, snack alcoholic beverages, this includes established...
Engaged, preparing, or serving specialty snacks like ice cream, frozen yogurt, cookies, popcorn, serving non-alcoholic beverages such as coffee, juice, soda for consumption of the near premises. So boutique food-type shops.
So no McDonald's on that?
Yes, that is correct. That would be a prohibited use per these conditions. Thank you, Kevin, for that list.
Okay. All right.
I wanted to quickly go back to your comment earlier about the green space plan. That condition 25 achieves what you had stated, that green space plan being made a part of the record and a part of this resolution.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because we have enough fast foods and we have enough gas stations and car washes, so...
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I have.
If there are no other questions or comments, I would like to make a motion to approve the modification to the zoning conditions for the property at Jonesboro Road.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here and none, all in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. County Manager.
Madam Chair, I sincerely apologize for this, but we are going to have to reopen the hearing for the dangerous dog case. I'm going to ask the county attorney to explain to the board what action you all need to take as it pertains to that case. The unfortunate part is the owner is not here, but the hearing has already been held. And so we want to make sure that, from a legality standpoint, we have done everything that we need to do to make sure that the intent of the board is being met. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to the county attorney, Rachel Mack.
Okay, Captain Hawke, you're still there.
And I apologize, Captain Hopgood is here.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. I would like to request a motion to reconsider the previous action taken on the dangerous dog determination in order to correct the record. We need clarification over, you all upheld the determination of the animal control officer, which was to determine that the dogs were dangerous dogs. However, there was something open-ended of whether or not you wanted to euthanize the dogs. So we don't have the clear understanding as to what the intent of this board is. So we would have to reconsider that previous action and then go back and vote on what you would like that motion to be.
Okay. That motion?
Right, so I would need a motion to reconsider your previous... Yes, to reopen.
Okay, all right. All in favor? Okay, now, what's next?
Now I need a motion to state whether you would, what your determination is, whether you would like to uphold the determination of the animal control officer deeming them dangerous dogs, and whether you would like to euthanize them.
A question?
Yes.
Was there a request to euthanize? I didn't hear a request to euthanize anywhere.
There was no... I would like to ask, I did not see one, but there might have been a recommendation from the animal control officer.
Yes, the recommendation was, the recommendation is that the animals be turned over to us, and then they will have to be euthanized because they're not suitable to be adoptable pets out to the public. So being them dangerous, we felt that the best thing to do would be to humanely euthanize the dogs rather than trying to turn those back into the public.
Okay.
And that was why I asked the question, how did they respond to staff? Because even if you adopt them out to strangers, they're...
Now I need a motion to state whether you would, what your determination is, whether you would like to uphold the determination of the animal control officer deeming them dangerous dogs and whether you would like to euthanize them.
A question.
Yes.
Was there a request to euthanize? I didn't hear a request to euthanize anywhere.
There was no, I would like to ask, I did not see one, but there might have been a recommendation from the animal control officer.
Yes, Commissioner, was, the recommendation is that the animals be turned over to us and then they will have to be euthanized because they're not suitable to be adoptable pets out to the public. So being them dangerous, we felt that the best thing to do would be to humanely euthanize the dogs rather than trying to turn those back into the public.
Okay. And that was why I asked the question, how did they respond to staff? Because even if you adopt them out to strangers, there could be some issues.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, especially when they're guarding articles, like Mr. Merchant said, because, like I said before, if they go after an article and a human steps in the way, then most of the times the animals will attack the human that's standing in the way of that article, whether it be food or a toy or whatever.
So Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, the two options before you tonight--
Is the action that you've taken, which is to classify the dogs as dangerous dogs, meaning that they will be returned to the owners. They'll just have that classification. If the intent of the board is to classify them as such and then have Animal Care and Control euthanize those dogs, then that needs to be a part of the motion that you all are making this evening.
Well, they've terrorized the community for a year.
I'm clear.
Can I ask one question? Would you put the original offer y'all had on the table back on five, six of 2025?
Commissioner Anglin, that's something that y'all would have to do in your judgment. I deemed them both dangerous. Y'all can make that offer to her that she can have one of the dogs back, but she can only get one of them back by law because our county code specifically states that there can only be one dangerous dog per domicile. So if y'all deem, y'all want one of the dogs to go back, you can choose the dog that you want to go back to her. But then there is a list of qualifications that she then has to do before she even gets the dog back. And she, I believe she has 30 days to make sure that those things are in place and then we have to go inspect them to make sure that she's made those modifications to her home.
And if that dog attacks somebody, what liability does that put on us if we don't go ahead and do what we need to do with both of the dogs? Because I don't want to be held responsible for the dog if we let one go back and they attack another child and a person in the neighborhood.
That's a legal question.
Madam Chair, if something, if another incident occurs with the dog that you do allow to go back, it will be euthanized per statute.
What precautionary measures would you inquire of her?
I don't want to speak off turn. I want to make sure that I pull it right back up so that I'm reading it straight from The owner has to have an enclosure designed to securely confine the classified dog on the owner's property indoors or in a securely locked and enclosed pin, fence, or structure suitable to prevent the classified dog from leaving such property. Clearly visible warning signs have to be posted at all entrances to the premises where the dog resides and a microchip containing an identification number incapable of being scanned has been injected under the skin between the shoulder blades of the classified dog. And then she has to pay an annual $100 certificate to keep the dog deemed. And if she ever moves out of Henry County, anywhere in the state of Georgia, she has to notify that jurisdiction and that has to carry through with the next jurisdiction as well.
She can't keep the four-year-old from unlocking the door.
So she--
Go ahead.
So she did indicate that there was one dog that she would like back, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So if that being said, she was very clear, then you all will walk her through the process. She has to clear some items as you have stated first, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And then the attorney said, if not, then it will have to be euthanized. Am I correct?
Yes, if she's found out of compliance, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Or if it bites somebody.
So if that motion is to be made, it just needs to be stated that the one dog can be returned and then, what else I may say?
So if the intent is to allow her to keep, I think Beauty--
Right.
--and Beast to be euthanized, then the motion would be a motion to classify both dogs as dangerous dogs with Beast being euthanized and Beauty being returned to the owner under full procedures and regulations as set forth by Henry County Animal Care and Control.
Okay. Can we use what you just said?
If it's correct, ma'am. Okay, I'm going to make sure, okay.
If that's the case, I'm moved.
Can I ask Captain Hopgood another question?
Yes, sir.
None of us have personally dealt with the dogs. Have you had an opportunity to personally deal with either or?
No, sir, that's why I brought Supervisor Merchant up, who he has left, but we discussed it after, after we left.
Okay. I was just curious as if your professional opinion and interaction with the dog, with the recommendation be, because we heard what she said, but none of us have personally dealt with to determine whether it's a vicious dog or not.
Well, both dogs are, they are restrained separately, so they're in separate kennels. We do not double up kennels. So they're being, they are being held individually. And Supervisor Merchant mentioned that both of them have shown aggression towards articles.
So, and then off of that, these, you know, y'all know how I am with fur babies, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
But I am trying to understand, so if this dog has been loose in the home, right?
Yes, ma'am.
To now be encaged, I can see the difference in a behavior, right? So I just want to be clear, and like I said, I don't know dogs, but at the same time, you running freely, right, to be encaged, there would be some difference there in the behavior. So I just want to state that. But I do want to, for me, I want to make the motion as the county manager just stated, to move, to approve, to allow Beauty to go back to the owner with all the restrictions that she would have to comply with and then, what's the other?
Beast.
Beast. Be under your care on what's next to be euthanized. That's my motion.
Got a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, next motion.
So, so let me present a third option if there is not a secondary motion. The board does have the ability to stay this matter. If we, if you all want us to go out, well, Animal Care and Control go out and spend some time with Beauty and Beast and report back to the board, that can be an option.
We're going to settle this tonight because--
Then we need a secondary motion.
--this is the second time this has been before us. So I'd like to make a motion to euthanize, to classify them as dangerous dogs and euthanize them both.
Clear.
Madam Chair, I'm going to second that with a comment because the next victim could be a child.
Child.
Absolutely. And children don't have the, they don't have the strength to get away from dangerous dogs like these adults did. You seen these adults run. Many times, many times, I've seen in my career where children get attacked by vicious dogs and these children wind up in hospital for many, many, many months. So I'm going to second your motion.
And, and, and to just, you know, even in my previous profession, a dangerous dog is a dangerous dog and I would feel bad if a child, even a senior that's walking in their neighborhood, you know, I just, so. Motion second, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, County Manager, do you have any comments?
No, ma'am, not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Stephanie, anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes.
Okay. I need to get a motion to approve the minutes for May 28th and June 3rd.
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor? Our next upcoming meetings is July 1, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. It's a regular scheduled BLC meeting and July 15, 2025 at 6:30 is a regular scheduled BLC meeting. Stephanie, do we have another meeting on the 15th?
We do. I think we scheduled it afterwards, but it's at 1:00 p.m. There'll be a strategic planning called meeting.
Okay.
And I'll place that on the next agenda.
Okay, all right. Outside of that, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Madam Chair, just one point of clarification. We also have a call meeting for the airport authority, although the board is not to be present, there will be a meeting here of that authority.
Okay.
My apologies.
Thank you.